Call this meeting to order, please. Silence your electronic devices so we can conduct our meeting. And stand for the invocation given by myself. Please join me in the Lord's Prayer. Hallelujah.
To our God. How we give Him name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses. And lead me through those who trespass against us. And we descend into temptation. But deliver us from evil.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the conference.
They're non-citing.
Communications.
Game of Thrones. Submitted an application for a liquor license in the Batavia City Center and there was no objection from the police department.
Any council questions or concerns on that? Continue, please.
And also, the bid submitted their request for the wine walk on Saturday, October 4th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. For wine sampling in the downtown businesses.
Any questions or concerns on that? I saw there was a cost related to that one. Approximately $400 or similar.
Yeah, the costs are usually, they're always on that summary sheet that's included in there.
Right, right.
But yes, this.
I just like to point that out, so you know, it's some of, most of them don't cost us anything, but some do. So they will be paid for by the bid.
Correct.
And that's all we have at that point?
That's it.
Next city council meeting will be held Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, 7:00 p.m. City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. Also, I just wanted to make a thank you to the city staff and the city manager. We were at the Burn Dairy ribbon cutting. I believe it was the, was it Friday of last week? Last week at some point?
Thursday.
Thursday or Friday. And one of the representatives from the Burn Dairy came up to me and said that he had a really positive experience working with code, working with city. And that out of all the stores he has managed or involved with opening, that this one was probably the easiest one for him to do. We're pro-business. And he wanted me to pass that on to you. I think Rachel was standing there when he was talking to me. So thank you guys for being pro-business. That's what we want. And apparently it made a good impression with the Burn Dairy folks. And they were able to open their store in a record time. So thank you for that. We also have the Harvester Business Move Report. We just kind of wanted to update on how they work. I see we have a little chart here. If Tammy wants to kind of give us a load down on it.
Thank you, Council President. Today I received, I'm gonna say 10 applications. Couple of the applications are either missing their quotes or one I received their quotes and not the actual application. So I stay in contact with the businesses. We'll get them all full as far as the file goes. I had thought that we would need until September 1st and everything would be done. But some of the businesses have been given extensions to stay on campus there and are actually moving into different spots. Or they've moved into storage and they're waiting for their new homes to be modified to meet the needs of their business. So I've told them all, we're just gonna keep it open to the end of the year. And when they're ready, we are ready. Based on the amount that I've actually expended, you know that I have permission for up to $20,000. I will most likely be coming back and asking for maybe another 10 to be used. Because I think that a couple of the applications that are waiting to move are larger businesses and they're gonna have larger expenses. So they'll probably max out that, the $5,000.
How do you feel about it?
It went well. I do wanna share on behalf of every single business I've talked to and those who are still preparing their applications that they're extremely grateful to all of council for allowing these funds to be available to them. Because it was so, in their words, traumatizing to have to leave their spaces where they have been for so long. And these additional expenses were nothing that they had planned into their budgets.
Well, it was a great idea that you had and that you could bring it in. It was because I think it was very effective, it looks like. So anyone else in any other country? Tammy was the owner of the Harvester. Have they proposed a new deadline for moving? So it's still.
Actually, so the businesses that are still there that are waiting to move into their new homes have said that they've been easy to work with.
So thank you again for having a great idea. And thank council for supporting that. And I'm glad it was very effective. And it seems like it's worked out really well. And that when you get to a point, if you need anything else, let us know and we'll consider it.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Legislative discussion, section 8481. Or is that how, what's?
Senate bill.
Senate bill, sorry, excuse me.
That's okay.
You think it'd be enough?
So before you, you have a request from Senator Barella's office to look at a piece of legislation, Senate Bill 8481, introduced by Senator Calavant. The legislation would authorize local governments to opt out of mandates and benchmarks established under the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, including universal electrification requirements. By filing a resolution with the Department of DEC, a copy of the bill is attached for your review in this memo. The senators' points are that this bill affirms the principle of home rule by allowing local governments to make energy decisions that reflect the unique needs of their residents and businesses. As you know, our communities are facing steep increases in utility costs and housing construction expenses due to the electrification mandates. They're looking at restrictive building codes, prohibiting natural gas, electric vehicle sales, which I don't know how we'd even achieve, why we're plowing salt, responding to fires, or to police activities. So it's your choice if you'd like to have a letter drafted to support this bill, but I think it's open for discussion.
Any habits, will we take a vote on it? Well, we don't have to take a vote on it. If we were gonna do it and we needed to vote, it would be moved to a business meeting. But right now, it's more comments.
Or you could direct me to write the letter tonight. I don't think it's.
Yeah, it's not, I don't know if it's something we actually need to vote on. It depends on that's what I disagree with. I read it and I think for population under a million, which is us, the sure, it gives us some options and it takes away some serious financial burdens we might incur trying to comply with that. And I'm not so sure it's a good fit for us, like the city manager said, for police vehicles in the winters we have here. Different parts of the state aren't as heavily snowed on as we are. So I think it's a nice thing to support, to keep our home rule and give us power over our own rules and regulations as far as concerning things like that. Building homes with gas and electric seems to be a better fit than just going one or the other and not having a backup plan in case power's out or a bad storm or whatnot. So that's my opinion on it. I mean, it's up to you guys. If you feel it's worthy to write the letter, we can direct her now. Of course, for the record, I support it.
I support it too.
Yeah, it makes sense. It just seemed to be common sense trying to relieve us a little bit of burdensome regulations. But anyone else?
Yeah, I agree too. We don't need fully electric, no plows. We're gonna poop out of the middle of the snowstorm. We don't need fully electric fire trucks. That if it's a sustained fire and you're running electricity, what do you do on your pumps? No, I'm in agreement that you should write the letter.
Anyone else?
Well, number one, I'm 100% supporter of home rule, period. Let local people decide their own future, their own fate.
Correct.
Their own life. And any interference in that, we've seen a fine example with the solar fields. The state just turned charges. They took it away from us and power projects and everything else. So I think it's absolutely vital that we maintain home rule.
Okay, so it's okay. You feel comfortable in directing the city manager to write the letter in support of that legislation?
And we'll pass it around for signature from every council member.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
Now you have an audit presentation?
Yes, Matt Maltombo is here from Drusher Molecki. And he is gonna go through, you should all have the audit presentation.
So I don't have to leave?
No, we're not. We're gonna make you leave just tonight for you. Because I don't know how to use the projector. We're not gonna make you leave. And if the media wants copies of these, we can definitely make them. So let me know.
All right.
Yes, both two.
We're looking towards your request.
Two copies.
Thank you very much. So as far as the PowerPoint presentation that's been heard before, we present the results of the audit. So on page one of the form, it talks about the different opinions that we're responsible for. In audit, it's a pretty comprehensive process. But primarily, the first opinion is on the financial statements of the city. So we're looking at your fiscal year ended March 31st, 2025. The financial statement opinion says, as an independent third party, we believe that your records are fairly stated. So you as a council can rely on the information provided to you by management. Obviously, that's very important when you're making budget decisions, when you're making operating decisions that you can rely on the records that are presented. So the financial statement opinion is that first primary opinion. That's the majority of our audit work. Is looking at your account balances. Can you verify the transactions that occurred? We do verifications from outside third parties confirming what you have with bank statements, your different asset accounts. So it's a pretty comprehensive process to get to that financial statement opinion. We also do what's referred to as a government auditing standards opinion. Now, that looks at your policies, your processes in place, and how that impacts the financial information. We also do a federal signal audit. And that is a compliance audit on your federal awards. So any federal grants, revenue that you receive, there's different programs that you're required to carry out certain requirements out of those programs. So we do a separate audit of the federal awards. And then finally, the New York State Department of Transportation funds. That's a New York State compliance audit. So we'll talk about each one of those. As far as the opinions, on page two, I talk a little bit about what our responsibility is. So I clarified that management is responsible for the books and the records. We're an independent third party, so we provide those opinions that I outlined on the last page. We do plan on moving forward with what's referred to as an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's a clean opinion, the best you can do from an audit standpoint. So based on our audit, we believe that your records are fairly stated. We're never gonna say they're 100% accurate because we don't look at every single transaction. That would take several months and would be very costly. But under our standards, we conducted an audit and we believe that your records are fairly stated. As far as your significant accounting policies and estimates, those are disclosed in the notes to the financial statements. Most of the accounting policies that have changed over the last, at least in the last five to 10 years, are related to your long-term liabilities. So your liabilities for pension, other post-employment benefits, that's retiree health insurance, your compensated absences, so the amounts that you pay out at retirement. All of those typically result, are the result of estimates. So certain assumptions that are made. And those are the significant ones that are required for the city. As far as independence, this is a requirement for the auditors. All of our staff, right up to the partner level, are required to be free of conflicts of interest from the city. That's what allows us to be objective in performing the audit and then ultimately provide that opinion of the financial statements. And then as far as other matters, we didn't have any difficulties performing the audit. We received full cooperation, full open access to the books and records. We were told not to look at anything. So we received cooperation throughout and allowed us to perform our audit and provide that opinion. Any questions on those before I kind of switch gears to more of the financial trends? All right, so we'll switch gears, your financial trends. And we do this for all of our clients. But on page three, you look at a five-year trend. What we refer to as an operations trend, your general fund revenues versus expenditures. So this really shows what your activities are from year to year. An observation that we've made for local governments in New York State, not just cities, but really every level, is a similar trend of the gap between revenues and expenditures is starting to close. So our revenues are starting to, at least our major revenue sources, are starting to kind of flatten out when you look at real property taxes, subject to the tax gap, sales tax, even interest earnings, state aid. All those major areas are starting to see less increases, or at least substantial increases. On the expense side, it's kind of the different story. Where the cost of everything seems to be going up. So all your major functions, salaries, benefits, contractual costs, employee, sorry, retirement system, all of those areas are increasing at anywhere from 5% to 7% on an average local government. So we see that trend. Expenditures in the red line increasing. Expenditures in the blue line starting to level out a little bit. So that gap was almost even in 2025, but you increased your general fund by about $200,000. So a modest increase. But as you can see, the last three fiscal years, and this is consistent with all the local governments in New York State, you typically saw a bigger increase in '22, '23, '24. And that was coming out of the, in the heavy pandemic period where the economy was recovering. Sales tax really took a boost or, you know, kind of took off. State aid, we even got some of those ARPA funds on the federal levels, some of the stimulus funds as well. So $200,000 increase in fund balance in the general fund. We look on page four, how does that impact our fund balance? So this is our equity position for governance. Same thing over the last five years. We break it into components because certain balances are more restricted than others. They're not totally available for use. So we kind of start in that top area, that sort of signed and committed, the green portion. Just about $1.15, $1.2 million. Most of that is appropriated for your next year's budget or I guess the current budget that you're in. That was during the budget process to help balance it, keep property taxes at a lower level. You appropriated some fund balance. You also have encumbrances. Those are commitments that you have, but they aren't true expenses yet. So they carry over for it to next year. The largest portion is restricted. So about $7.1 million, just over 7.1. Those are set aside for specific purposes. So restricted to those purposes. Mostly in the capital project area. You have several different projects that you have under restricted funds. Insurance, retirement, employee benefits, some of those big contingent liabilities. So it's very, it's prudent to set that money aside. And then you hope that you never need it. Obviously, on the capital project side, you will. But those other items are more really for contingencies going forward. It puts yourself in a more flexible position. And then the last portion is your unassigned. So that's the only truly available portion of fund balance. About $4.9 million, an increase from the prior year. You've been able to increase that over the last five years. On the next slide, we focus in on that. Because that is a number that a lot of, a lot of best practices related to local governments looks at unassigned. And what percentage is it of your budget? Because it shows how liquid the entity is. Obviously, we talked about those major revenue sources, whether it's sales tax, property taxes, or state aid. All of those revenue sources come in at a lag. So they're not, not here at the city day one. But you're paying your employees day one. You're operating the government. So it's important that you have some cushion or flexibility at hand to pay those obligations.
So just a quick question. What is, are we at the recommended 22.3%? Is that a good, I mean, because we were told that, that now you're here, you're an expert. Is that a good number that we should be shooting for?
Yep, I can comment on that, absolutely.
Go ahead.
So a lot of agencies or, you know, whether it's the OSC or the GFOA, from time to time, they'll switch their, you know, best practice. But I think what we typically follow, the GFOA says you should have a minimum for general purpose governments, local governments, you should have a minimum of two months of your operating expenses. So 16.67% mid, kind of starting there as, you know, point. So if you fall below that, that's when you start to get concerned. On the other level, you do have a fund balance policy that kind of dictates what reasonable range for the city of Batavia is. And that is anywhere from 15% to 25%. So you being in that 22.3, that, you've done the work by putting the policy together. That's based on, you know, evaluating the city's operations as well as considering those other best practices. So being in that range, I would say is a reasonable range, yes. Are you subject to criticism from any outside group? Always. But you can, what they say, especially on the OSC side, if you have a fund balance policy, that's really what you're operating under. If you didn't have a policy and you're just kind of accumulating funds, you don't have a plan. But you have a pretty detailed plan for all of your fund balances, whether it's restricted or unassigned. So I think you're doing everything right from that standpoint. And I would say you're within a reasonable range.
Thank you.
Yep. And then really, as far as our overall observations on the audit, obviously, there's other funds that the city operates outside of the general fund. All of those were seen to be in a stable position. We talked a lot about the enterprise funds with the audit committee and some of the, you know, upcoming projects there. But really, you're in a stable position in all of your major funds. Certainly, we give caution to our local governments right now just because of that operations trend. We anticipate that expenditures are still gonna go up and revenues are going to become more and more difficult to generate, especially within those major revenue sources. And you're also subject to a property tax cap as well. So I think just, you know, from a budget side, challenges going forward. But I think from a fund balance standpoint, you're in a good position to handle those challenges as well as, you know, really complete those capital projects that are much needed. As far as best practices, we also issue a management letter. So a lot of the items that we've recommended in the past, whether it be operational or accounting policies, those have been addressed. At least from the general, entry, bankrupt side. That was what we wanted to see more formalized last year. Those have been implemented. This year, we're looking at AI policies, so just being proactive on, you know, there's a lot of opportunities on the AI side, whether it's a software program or, you know, different departments that I think will start to be, come to light. So just having good policies in place on how to handle those situations. So everybody's on the same page when those occur. And then other, another kind of red flag and risk area that we're seeing with local governments right now is staffing and succession planning. A lot of just the kind of wave of retirements and turnover that's hit the industry over the last five years. And I don't think that's gonna necessarily slow down as, you know, kind of that generational turnover, if you will. So the risk is you have a lot of experience in a position that's been there for 30-plus years. How do you transfer that to the next, you know, the next individual or individuals coming here? So a lot of that takes place prior to some of the retiring. So what we always recommend is look at where you're most vulnerable to have, you know, turnover. And then start putting those cross-training policies, procedures in place.
If I can just interject. We have recently, with the city manager, Rachel, we've hired ahead, councils approved the additional hiring before the retirement to allow a period of transition, especially in the police department where it's specialized detective work, things like that. So we have been a little proactive on that at this point already. Assistant city manager, for example, we're doing a transition and we're working in from one position to the next. So we're aware of that. And thank you for reminding us because you're saying that's a good thing to do. So we've already kind of been doing that. So that's reassuring that we're on the right track. So thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah, great point. I mean, it's, you're never gonna eliminate that risk. But that's where we see the biggest issues when you're not proactive. And there's either, you know, a larger learning curve or a vacancy, if you will, in certain positions. So very good. So those are the key observations. From our standpoint, we're in a position where we can move forward to finalize those statements. I know you have some resolutions as far as fund balances to go through. But we'll, our last piece of documentation that we do after this meeting is a representation letter from management, basically saying, we take responsibility for the books and the records. Once we get that, we can issue everything finally and file it with the federal government. Any other questions?
So you're generally saying we pay us?
Yes.
With flying colors or good or?
As much as I can say that.
All right, I just, you know, any reason to fly the colors, I'm good.
Yep, yep. No, it's a solid organization as far as the internal controls of the finances. So I don't, I don't have a problem saying that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah, what a thank you. I sat with you when we bought over this.
Yep.
Initially, and I left the meeting feeling very good. That we're on fine financial standing and moving forward. And as you know, pointed out, by being proactive, I think, with this, and then moving people up, I think we're gonna retain a lot more people because they know the transmission or the trans, transfer from one jet and that's just gonna be smooth. They're gonna be ready for it. They're not gonna worry about it as much as if they wanted to align.
Yep.
And it's a reflection of our management.
Right, yes. And staff.
And our accounting. Lisa, hi.
And staff.
Thank you.
I mean, you know, it's, it takes a lot of work and we take a lot of pride. So it's a big responsibility. I think it's the biggest responsibility of the council member is managing the public funds in appropriate manner and making sure we get the most efficiency and we do it all in a proper way. So it seems like, you know, with our management and our staff, we're on the right track. And it's good to hear it from you, a professional outside of all this, to hear your honest opinion on it. And I'm glad, I like your feedback, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much then.
Okay.
Thanks. I'll give you a hangup. Yep, you too. The squad 16 surplus.
Yes.
It is squad 16, right?
Ah, yes. The old squad 16, not the new squad 16. So the trucks keep the same number when you get new ones?
So it's just called new 16 until the old ones go out?
Yes.
Before you, the city fire department is requesting permission to surplus the 2012 2500 Chevy pickup as they just recently replaced it to the new squad 16.
How many miles did it go?
I don't know specifically, but I think it was somewhere around 90,000.
So we got good use out of it. You're happy we got a good, solid use out of that vehicle?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Any questions for the chief? So are we in consensus to move the squad surplus to a business meeting? It gets moved. Car seat grant?
Yes, thank you, council president, members of council. City of Batavia Fire Department received a grant for $3,250 to purchase and install car safety seats for children and to train members of staff in installing car seats and doing different programs on vehicle safety. This is an annual grant that we have received for the last decade or so. And we're hoping council will accept the grant and move it to the business meeting.
Are we still able to buy the same amount of car seats for this money? Or is it increasing the number as the price goes up?
Each year, the number of car seats we buy fluctuates just based off of what we have in stock and things like that. But the prices are going up, so.
Good program?
It is a good program.
People let people take use of it and you teach them how to put their child in the seat safely?
We do.
Good. I mean, I know you've been doing it for years, but I guess you've been doing so well with it. We, I almost forgot you guys are still doing that. So it's nice to be reminded that you're offering that to the community and properly training as well as providing the seat. So if someone has their own seat, they can come and get advice on how to hook it up properly. And you can make sure the seat's not outdated or some of them have been so old that it was wiser to just get a whole new one, right?
Outdated or, you know, there's weight restrictions on certain car seats. We can install it for them if they want us to install it for them or show them how to install it. And then we added, I think, six new technicians last year, so.
So if they, even if they don't need a new seat, they just want help on properly installing it in a new vehicle or it's a new seat to them and they're not familiar with it, you guys will help them with that, right?
Correct.
Good to hear. Any, oh, go ahead. Chief, how many seats do you give out of your?
It fluctuates. I don't know specifically how many we gave out last year, but we have received quite a few calls from the hospital with newborns, with some underprivileged families that couldn't afford a car seat, so they come over and put a car seat in.
And is there a white to these things? You know?
Yeah, they all have a white.
What is it?
It depends, I think, on the car seat and the manufacturer, but.
Anyone else? So are we in consensus to move this to the business meeting? It gets moved. Traffic Safety Committee?
Thank you, council president. The Traffic Safety Committee grant for the police department was received for $15,048 to increase seatbelt use, reduce dangerous driving, and reduce traffic accidents. We're hoping that council will accept this and move it to the next business meeting.
Anyone have any questions for the police department? Sean, it works out, it's a good program. I mean, you guys do it every year, but do you feel it's worth doing it, or are you making a difference?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, any additional funding that we can receive to target specifically traffic safety issues in the city is great because as repeated here many, many times, our officers are a lot of times tied up on cases and calls for service, and they can't get to the traffic incidents that are not the, I shouldn't say the proactive traffic incidents that we're looking for. So this grant was written by Assistant Chief Camp this year, so, and every year for the last, quite a few.
So this basically puts additional patrols on, so then the crime reports can still be taken, or patrol can still be done, and then they're working with specific problem of seatbelts or EWI, whatever is granted.
That's correct.
Good. So are we in consensus to move this to the business meeting?
Yes.
Is this gets moved? Micro enterprise grant. Basically just scheduling the following.
We are, and this may feel like deja vu because you've seen this four times, and already had a public hearing on it, but as we went to submit it through the firm, Tammy's working with Harrison Studios who does these grants, we found out that the language we used to publish the public hearing was outdated and we had to redo the entire process. So we're asking that you schedule the public hearing for October 27th, and we will publish with the new updated language. And this is a rolling grant, so she can apply at any time. So we haven't missed any type of deadlines, but we will have to relook at it again, and as you remember, at the public hearing, there was no comments.
So we'll give it another shot?
Yes.
It's just a wording issue, but we should do it correctly, so I have no problem with redoing it. So are we in consensus to move the scheduling of the public hearing to a future business meeting? Okay, that gets moved. Tree, RFP awarded.
Yes, so the city was awarded $758,000 for tree removal, trimming, and planting in disadvantaged zones across the city, mainly wards five and six. To assist with the administration, the planning, compliance, and preparation for the project, the city issued an RFP. The responses were received last Friday, that's why you have X's in your packet. However, there was only one bidder, and their bid exceeded the grant amount. So we will, at the next meeting, bring in forward a resolution to reject that one bid and working with DEC to find a different solution to help. One of the main things this consultant was going to do is take our tree inventory, help us with updates on that, and then every single tree we plant needs a DigSafe ticket, and that's a lot of work to have our DPW doing. So there was a scope of work that we wanted them to participate in, and like I said, we only had one bid, and it was way beyond our ability to pay for it. So this is not the contractor side, this is the consultant side.
Any questions or, Bob?
Did we lose many trees to shoot when you went to our planet?
Did we? Oh, there's a rate of loss, I think that's acceptable, the DOP standards of?
Well, it's also dry.
Ten percent. But we don't plant in the summer. We only plant in the fall and the spring when the ground's naturally wet and they're going to get enough moisture.
These are planted in the spring. I've seen some that don't look like, you know, a lot of people just don't want to water them.
Yep. And Scott, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, some trees come with warranties as well? No, no warranties? What's an acceptable loss rate, ten percent?
Ten to fifteen percent is a standard loss rate.
Yeah.
So, fill me in, we have this memo from Tom saying that there was Chestnut Ridge Nursery, so that's for the trees but not for the management.
That is for another tree item on the agenda later.
Okay. Okay, just because I saw both and I'm like, I knew one.
That one, we like the bids on that one, and we'll take those.
One had the X's on it to be announced future, and that's the one that we're talking about.
Correct. Yep.
That's why, okay, that makes sense. So are we in consensus then to, well, what's our process for rejecting them? Do we just, you're just going to basically say, we're not going to move this?
Yeah, the resolution you have at the business meeting will be a rejection of bids resolution.
Right, so we're in consensus to reject the bids and move that to the business meeting for official vote to reject that. Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Out of resolution to fund reserves?
Yes, so as you heard from Matt Maltombo, we do have reserves that are at a healthy amount. Our fund balance policy, I hate to correct them, is between twenty and twenty-five percent, I believe. I didn't want to correct them when I was up there. So we can still stay at twenty-two percent this year of fund balance and allocate $910,000 to those restricted reserves. You have a memo before you that talks about the, which funds would receive funds out of the $910,000, including police reserves, fire reserves, Dwyer Stadium reserves, DPW equipment reserves, the ice rink, facility reserves, sidewalk reserves, compensated absences, parking lots, parks, and retirement. So I could certainly discuss any or all of these items, there's quite a lot there. This was reviewed by the Audit Committee, which liked the recommendation, and I'm asking council, you know, when we're lucky enough to have some funds to put into reserves for specific projects and purchases, I think it's a good move.
Right. Any questions on any of those? Because they're all, they average approximately around fifty to sixty thousand per application, so it's not like one fund is getting overloaded.
DPW equipment reserves is always one of the highest, just because the equipment they buy is extremely expensive.
Well, and it's helped in the past when we've had some money to put down and not have to finance the whole amount, or there's been an emergency and one of these things go down and irreparable. It's nice to have some reserve money and not try to find money from other accounts to try to pay for it. So I always believe in being responsible and having these reserves at a healthy level so that, and we have used them in emergencies in the past, and it's come in handy, so.
And there is.
Especially during COVID, it's pretty much carried us for a while there.
If we had some sort of emergency in one of the funds or something we needed to do, by council authorization, you can move reserves from one reserve to another. So you think of these as a whole, like Matt was explaining, but also separately, that gives the ability for capital planning to occur each year for the department head.
Right, right. So any other questions or concerns? So are we in consensus to move that reserve resolution to the business meeting for a vote? It gets moved. County MOU for the North Point Drive project?
Yes, thank you, council president. As many of you are aware, the Batavia Homes and Development led by John Harrowell is constructing thirty new market rate, single-family homes ranging from fourteen hundred to twenty-one hundred square feet at the end of North Point Drive. Homes will be priced around $300,000 to align with middle-income housing demand. To enable the project, Batavia Homes and Development will extend the roadway, sewer, and water at North Point Drive, and an expansion of the pump station at Nairmore will be undertaken to ensure sewer capacity for the new homes. That pump station is currently at capacity. Genesee County was successful in securing a brand-new grant put out by the state under the county infrastructure grant program to assist with the total cost of infrastructure to the tune of $1 million. And what Genesee County is asking is for the city to enter an MOU to support the administration of the county infrastructure grant program and to manage with the client the grant throughout its lifecycle. So the grant comes to Genesee County, and once the project is completely done, just like a Restore New York grant would, if we use the Cars building, for example, and then the developer gets, after they spend at least $2 million on infrastructure, they would receive a million back. It would be our job with our grants administrator to help them keep up with their paperwork, their MWBE utilization. And then for the pump station, because that is a city asset and not on the site, we have to have a Public Works bid, MWBE associated with that as well.
So, cost to the city?
Zero.
So grants?
I'm sorry, the time of staff would be the cost to the city.
So other than normal business, staff work, the cost to the city is nothing, and the developer would pick up the cost after the grant?
Correct.
So developer and the county, we're all working together to make sure this happens, and we're going to end up with a new city street, and they will take care of building the thirty homes for their own. That's the private project that they're going to be doing.
Correct.
And the developer puts the bill for the upgrades to that pump station?
They do, and you'll see that resolution, two more down, three more down. Yep. So we're looking for an escrow. We will put the bid out, we'll get it designed and engineered as a Public Works project, but they need to put $700,000 in an escrow for us and then pay the full cost at the project completion.
So we get a street extension, we get additional neighborhood, and we're just supporting the project through the county MOU?
Right. Counties were the only applicants allowed to go after these grants. Otherwise, the city would have, it would have been easier, right? But it's, we're very thankful for the county for going after the grant and supporting it, and we'd like to support to make sure that everything runs flawlessly for the project.
And we'll be receiving quite a substantial property tax benefit from that as well?
Any new home certainly adds to the tax base. Any improvements that are done, any new building, it's certainly part of our economic development strategy to do so.
It's a great thing. Thirty new families move into the city. That's thirty new families, they're going to be on Main Street, they're going to be spending money in the city supporting local businesses. I think this is a wonderful thing. I think it's been a while since we've had anything of this go through, we actually expanded streets, dotted and branched, literally low-cost to the city. I think this is a wonderful thing.
There's very few sites in the city that could sustain new housing developments. This is one of them. There's another one near it that could sustain another thirty single-family homes, and one at the end of North Street that could maybe twenty, twenty-five homes as well. So in the first ward, once those areas are built out, there's no more land left, I would say. There are some other sites we're looking at, and of course, thinking about going vertical with homes as well for people who don't want to do maintenance and things like that.
But housing has been one of the things we've got pretty much our most requests for. The housing market, the available houses and apartments, and that's what I keep hearing from people I talk to, is they want a nice place to be able to have an apartment in someplace in downtown here or something close by all the activities. So this will help a little bit, it'll be houses instead of apartments, but we're trying to do, the last I knew, we were talking about as council, we had, I think, one of the previous meetings, we were talking about a multifaceted approach to it, houses, apartments, townhouses, we're trying to give, hit all the areas that people are calling about. Thank you for doing that, and keep us abreast as to how that goes.
Will do, thank you.
Okay, so are we in consensus to move that MOU to the business meeting for a vote? High service pump number one?
Yes, thank you, council president. The city bid out the rebuild of high-service pump number one at the water plant. One bid was received for $92,450 from W2O. W2O is the Trillium Flow Technologies exclusive authorized distributor for manufactured pumps and replacement parts for the municipal industrial market in the state of New York. So we're asking for the bid to be accepted so we can move forward with the pump rebuilt. And if you have specific questions, Haley or Tom can answer what high-service pump number one is.
How was the pump rebuilt?
I believe it's from 2000.
It was built 2000 or something. Haley, is this one of the pumps that maintains water pressure in the city?
Yep, it's the one that runs twenty-four seven.
Okay. How does this work with the county and the water, I mean, as far as equipment repairs to the sewer thing, how does that work?
So this will be a reimbursable expense from the county, as per the O and M agreement with the county, so the water plant.
So we handle the bidding, and we do all the spec-ing, and we get it all done. They probably obviously are working with us to make sure it's proper and it's going to work, right? I would think.
Our staff does that, but yeah.
I mean, we're, you know, just to make sure it's not going to be underpowered or overpowered or something, I guess. So we're all working together on this, is what I meant.
We're just being a rebuilder. We're not changing the pump in one wave shape or another. It's the exact same pump.
That's a 250 horsepower pump, that's a big motor pump.
That's a big, yeah. Okay, this was curious, because I know, I get confused sometimes the way the water and the county and who's paying for what. I just need to be reminded on occasion, so. Very good work on that, and any other questions for the other pump? All right, so are we in consensus to move that to a business meeting? Thank you very much. Rezone 200 Oak Street?
Yes, thank you, council president. Mr. Jayish Patel of Reddick Management is planning to convert the vacant Days Inn into a climate-controlled storage unit, knocking down the front of the building, adding new retail and townhomes to the site located off of Oak Street and the New York State thruway. The neighbors of the property to the west is Commercial with the old Super 8, which is now the Baymont?
Yeah.
The Baymont, which has been completely rehabbed by the same owner, and Quikly's also right next door. And to the south of it is Neighborhood Properties with single-family homes. So the request tonight is to refer the zoning petition of the site to the Planning and Development Committee, as the owner is seeking the zoning change from a C2 to a Planned Development District Five. There's a site plan included in your materials for you to look at what the new site layout would be, having the townhomes, the retail, and then the storage would be in the back closest to the 90, the expressway.
So at this point, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I have some concerns of any development over there right now. One, and this one specifically, is, I want to be careful we don't end up with a mess like we did on Elekis Street, Loy come housing and high-density houses, but might not be what we're looking for. Number two, I'd like to have a public hearing, which.
There will be a public hearing in connection with any zoning change.
Just for clarity, the only thing that's being referred, if the council chooses to refer it, is the question of a zoning change. If the zoning is changed at the behest of council after a PDC recommendation, there would have to be a site plan review for a project consistent with the updated revised zoning. So PDC is not going to look at the site plan review at this point. They're only going to look at a potential recommendation from council to consider a zoning change to that zone.
Right, that zoning change fits that neighborhood and comprehensive plans and so on, that's, they're going to give it a once-over to make sure that it's going to fit there, correct? And then they'll make a recommendation to either change it or leave it alone, and then we would either act or not act accordingly.
Correct, with a public hearing for a local law change with seeker determination as well.
Another concern I have is traffic. We have a high traffic congestion problem there now at that intersection, and the state was reluctant, or they didn't, wouldn't, put in a left turn signal if you're heading north on Oak Street. They wouldn't put in a left turn signal, but I really think we need to make sure we don't increase any more traffic in that vicinity.
That may be more site plan specific, and it's going to be outside the purview of the PDC and reluctantly outside the purview of city council to the extent that's the state highway. So they will have to look at the question of a zoning change only, and then subsequently, if that change is made by council as a legislative function, they would have to consider a project and potential impacts to that project.
Yeah, I'm thinking in mind that we could ask the state to re-look at the lights and the situation, because, you know, we went through a lot of problems with Oak Street re-changing that at one point. I know the state, I was here for the meetings, the state was quite put out. The two engineers said, oh, great, now we have to go back to the drawing board, but they did, and really helped the situation. We need help with that light there. Thank you.
So just to clarify, we're only referring this to the planning committee so they can do a deep dive on it and see if the zoning change is. do a deep dive on it and see if the zoning change is something that we should be doing. And then we'll report back to us, so this is at the very preliminary stages of it. If it does work out, then they'll, we'll talk about the project and that'll be a secondary thing, but right now, our focus is just on the zoning, not the project. Correct?
Correct.
So are we in consensus to move the, referring to the Planning Board about this project for a zoning consideration? Are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved. Project performance agreement, North Point Drive?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Councilmember Twitchell had mentioned the ability to ensure that the developer pays for the upgrades to the pump station, which is allowable by code. When a new subdivision comes in, they are responsible for all of the infrastructure that is needed to then build those homes. So you have before you a project performance agreement for the, the sanitary pump station only. The city Batavia, as I said before, will procure an engineering firm, complete the design, bid out the work as a Public Works contract with MWBE requirements as per the grant, so we can get reimbursed, and the project owner would need to deposit $700,000 in funding to a city-held account by the city clerk to ensure that we receive the funds required to upgrade the pump station.
Any questions on that? Kind of covered some of that earlier, but now this is the official part of that project, the pump section of it. So are we in consensus then to move that performance agreement to the business meeting for a vote? Can that gets moved? Purchase of Bobcat for snow removal. So we're talking snow, right?
We are. Thank you, Council President. With the addition of several new tight plowing areas in the city, including Jackson Square, Bank Street, the police station, and others downtown, DPW Director Tom Falz is requesting the purchase of a second Bobcat machine to assist with snow removal operations mainly in the downtown. The Bobcat will be more efficient and practical than attempting to use a large truck-mounted plow, and I'll let Tom explain what this purchase will do to enable snow removal this winter.
This will give us the backup we do not have at this moment in case the Bobcat we have at this time goes down. Last year, when it went down, luckily, the snow had stopped for a couple weeks, so we got lucky on that part. It also will help us clear out more tight areas in a more timely fashion, like the Jackson Square, as you mentioned, and along with the new police station.
And it retires the 77 swinger.
What, is that a company name, swinger model?
It's a, it's an old snow...
Is that before Bobcat became Bobcat, or?
No, it's just the old name.
I've never heard of that name before. I mean, not that I've been constructing with it, but I, it's got to be pretty old. How do you even get parts for it?
That's the problem. We can't get parts for it.
I mean, that's quite old.
Right.
So that'll be retired and you'll end up with an older Bobcat and the new one that you're talking about.
Correct, with interchangeable parts.
And, and does the Bobcat dealership in the, right down the road from you, does that help you?
Yes.
For parts and stuff?
Yes.
It's got to be a good convenience to be, have so many services just down the road from.
Right, it also helps that they both utilize the same attachment so they can be interchanged amongst them without having to delay anything or retrofit anything.
If one goes down, you can take the front end or the attachment off and put it on the other one and go right into...
Correct, yes.
Okay, good. Any other questions, Bob?
This is all current and Bobcat dealership.
Yes.
Yep. I kind of like the name myself.
All right, so any other questions on that piece of equipment? So are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting for a vote? That gets moved. And then we have the Austin Park bid is not going to be discussed today, so we're going with the tree bid award.
Yes, the, it's at the end. The tree bid award, so.
This is the one that we have, this $625. This is the amount that we all received today when we arrived here.
Yes, and thank you for letting us add it on. The Department of Public Works issued requests for bids for the purchase of 125 various trees for planting. The trees will be used for replacement of previously removed trees from streets involved in our construction projects this year and some of the sidewalk projects we have done. And there was two bids received. The lowest responsible bidder meeting the criteria was Chestnut Ridge Nursery Incorporated in the amount of $10,625, including no-cost delivery. So this is a reimbursable portion of the CHIPS program, which we use to repave our streets and our sidewalks the majority of every budget.
And with DPW plants the trees, they deliver them, and then we, our own employees do the actual service?
Right.
Any questions?
These trees are delivered here to the Bureau?
The trees will be delivered to the Bureau.
Are they?
The trees would be delivered to the Bureau.
Okay. So we don't have to drive a lot of cars?
No.
And it was like you said, free delivery to the Bureau maintenance, right?
Correct.
And then you guys, from there, you're going to put them right into where they need to go, this far, hopefully. And Rachel, this is separate from the tree grant award?
It, it is, yes. This is our normal planting and re-restoration of areas that had street paving and sidewalks redone. But we will also be committing our folks to doing 200 trees as part of the tree grant.
Correct. Because of the number of trees we were purchasing this year, we had to put this out to bid. Normally, when I have to go out to bid, it would just be three quotes, because the addition of the other ones, we had to put it out for bid.
Yes. So these quotes will be good, moving forward, actually, for the amount we're doing ourselves as part of the tree grant.
Is there a lesser cost for a larger amount of trees that we order?
Per, per unit, right?
It's a per unit.
Tom, when you have, when you accept delivery of the trees, are they inspected? Do you inspect them? Have you rejected any?
The tree for Scott, you're right.
I'm sorry.
Do you reject the trees?
Do you ever reject any of the trees?
We definitely could reject the tree if it was ill or, or not healthy.
Yeah, and it's not a problem.
That's been the past, just in the past, yes, that no problem swatting out a healthy tree.
Do you, do you order certain varieties specifically to, so that they withstand our weather and our...
We do, there's, I think he, Brian Messer, Park Supervisor, inspected out six different species of greens, desolates, less likely to have.
You wouldn't want to order those ash trees, though.
Correct. Some that are lower for under 500 years.
So aware of the latest problems with the trees that we're trying to avoid, ordering trees that are susceptible to those problems and we want the last, because, you know, even Elica Street, I had a comment from somebody the other day, they noticed the trees are starting to fill out, and, and Elica Street had a lot of, you know, construction over the years and the planting, so it was this year for some reason, and they noticed that canopy's starting to go bad. So that's what I remember when I was a kid, and that's what everybody is looking for, is that, that canopy and that street, you know, nice shady trees and stuff, so. It's going to take a while, but I mean, at least we're achieving, we're trying to get to that point, so thank you for that. Any other questions for, so are we in conjunction or consensus to move that to the business meeting for a vote? And rejection of Austin Park?
Yes, thank you, Council President. We did put out the Austin Parks Playground Equipment and Installation bids on August 25th, excuse me, for the inclusive playground project. We received six bids and they were opened. The lowest responsible bidder was identified that they're, they had a different form, using a manufacturer different from the specified in the bid, and the highest bid was upwards of $900,000, way beyond our ability to pay for the project. So we're asking to reject the bids and we'd like to put them back out and refine our scope and specs.
So we're looking for a bid that's either below $500,000, is that correct?
Actually, $725,000 with the correct specifications as noted in the bid documents.
Right, so they have to meet the specs, or that's the case here, the lowest bid didn't meet the specs, so we're going to redo the whole thing and get another shot at it. That, that's happened with a couple projects and it actually worked out better by re-spec-ing it a little bit or breaking it into a couple parts instead of one big one. Tom has been really good at doing stuff like that. He did well with the mall roof, I think we, we had a perfect example, or there was something we did where we kind of broke it down a little bit and we got it figured out. I think it might have been the entrances, maybe I'm thinking of. We, we had a couple chances then, so that's what we're talking about here, so. Any questions? So are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting for a vote? Can that gets moved? Motion to adjourn, Mr. Guy. Second to none, Mr. Byakowski. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Guy?
Yeah.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt? Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Okay, meeting is adjourned.